Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 27, 2018 legislative session. At this time, I would ask you please to silence all electronic devices that make noise. If during the meeting, an emergency should arise, we ask you that you please leave in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn, and proceed down the staircase. If for some reason that exit is blocked, we ask you to make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn and go down the staircase. If you need assistance, please ask, and we'll be happy to provide it to you. Please do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. At this time, I'll call Pastor Greg Carlson from Park Seventh Day at Venice Church to the podium for our invocation. Pastor?
Thank you. Father of heaven, this evening, as this meeting convenes, we want to ask that your blessing be upon each person in this room. Lord, in your word, you promised wisdom to those who ask, and so I ask for wisdom for the men and women who operate the business of the great city of Salisbury. I ask your blessing on them and their families, their pursuits, that they be in good health and prosper. Lord, I ask that you would protect and be with those who serve this city as our police, our firefighters, our emergency personnel. And in this last week of summer, Lord, before school starts, I would ask that you be with the teachers as they prepare and with the young people as they get ready and begin school. Lord, be with us now as the business takes place, and we pray that the decisions made here would make for a safer and happier and more productive city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I mean, sorry. I entertain a motion in a second to adopt a legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Boda. Who was it over there?
Irtin.
Mr. Irtin, I thought that. Let's see what it was. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Irtin. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, President Eve, Council. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 25 budget session minutes, the May 8 budget session minutes, Resolution Number 2861 authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the community of Joy Church of the Brethren for the continued use of city property for a community garden. Resolution Number 2862 declaring that Pediatric Cardiology of Maryland LLC and PCOM Holdings LLC are eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits in connection with property in a business located at 560 Riverside Drive. And Resolution Number 2863 approving the appointment of Benjamin R. Rager to the revolving loan advisory committee for term ending August 2021. And that's it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. At this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Rager and for serving on the revolving loan advisory committee. I don't believe he's here tonight. And I would also like to acknowledge Reverend Hutchinson and the community garden people. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2864.
So moved.
Mr. Irtin.
Mr. Boda.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Resolution Number 2864, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, extending the equivalent dwelling unit EDU incentive area to eliminate or reduce water or sewer charges in accordance with Chapter 13.02 of the City Code to encourage development in the downtown area and enterprise zone. Whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the downtown development district and central business district and the riverfront redevelopment area and the enterprise zone. And whereas Ordinance Number 2258 was adopted on September 23, 2013, and provided for an EDU incentive area to reduce the capacity fees for eligible development and redevelopment in the downtown area for a period of five years from the date of the final passage of Ordinance 2258. And whereas Chapter 13.04.110A of the City Code states that EDU incentives shall be reevaluated prior to the end of the five-year period. And whereas the EDU incentive area included an allocation of 300 EDUs from the former linens of the week property, and whereas as of July 31, 2018, there are 279.2 EDUs available from the original allocation. And whereas to continue to encourage development and redevelopment of the properties in the downtown area and central business district, the expiration date of the EDU incentive area is extended by five years.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 2864, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2865.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge be waived for a development known as 500 Riverside Drive. Whereas the owners of 500 Riverside Drive has requested a waiver of the capacity fee for the development of their property, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits and the central business district. And whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the central business district, and whereas the city seeks to reduce the capacity fees for eligible development and redevelopment in the central business district by means of an equivalent dwelling unit EDU incentive area, and whereas the proposed redevelopment of 500 Riverside requires 63 equivalent dwelling units of water and sewer service, and whereas the current capacity fee for one EDU is $3,533, and whereas the capacity fee for 63 EDUs is $222,570. And whereas the City Council approved a capacity fee waiver process under Ordinance Number 2258 for development in the central business district, and whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development reviewed and requested and has determined that the project is eligible for the capacity fee waiver, and whereas the mayor reviewed and requested and supports sending the request to the City Council. And whereas if approved, the EDU allocation for the capacity fee waiver is valid for two years from the time of signing this resolution. And whereas the property owner has the option to request an extension of the allocation for two one-year terms if approved in writing by the Infrastructure and Development Director prior to the expiration of the term, and whereas allocated EDUs are assigned to the redevelopment of 500 Riverside Drive and cannot be transferred by the recipient.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, Resolution Number 2865, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair, opposed?
No.
Aye.
I don't oppose this.
All right. I'm just saying, I didn't hear anything.
If we could make sure, Mr. Council President, when, back in 2013, when this was first passed, Brad Belachico, who was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, told the newspaper that it was one of the most important things that Salisbury had ever done for downtown. It would be my hope that both the mayor and the department are getting back with the Chamber of Commerce and getting back with Salisbury Wycomico Economic Development. And if it's just a little card that says 273.2 left, this is what we still have to do downtown. So, but I congratulate 500 Riverside, and I congratulate us for continuing to use the gray hair on my head from linens of the week property.
I can remember that time.
On Anne Street, and seeing these things finally coming to getting to use. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I said the vote was unanimously passed, so, okay. The chair voted aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2499.
So moved.
Mr. Irtin.
Second.
Mr. Boda.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget and grant fund to reallocate funding for the Salisbury Revitalization Riverwalk Amphitheater Project. Whereas Ordinance 2423 appointed appropriated funds for the FY 2018 budget, and whereas Ordinance 2423 allocated capital project appropriations in the amount of $400,000 of contributions for the Riverwalk Amphitheater Project, and whereas Ordinance Number 2482 appropriated funds for the fiscal year 2019 budget, and whereas Ordinance 2482 allocated capital project appropriations in the amount of $100,000 of contributions for the Riverwalk Amphitheater Project, and whereas the City of Salisbury has received grant funding from the state of Maryland through Senate Bill 186 of the 2018 Maryland General Assembly Session, and whereas the state of Maryland has designated the Department of General Services to distribute these funds in the amount of $500,000, and whereas a budget amendment is requested to reclassify the funding from contributions to grants, and whereas a transfer of $500,000 will be made into the Riverwalk Amphitheater Capital Projects Grant Accounts from contributions now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital projects fund and grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. And that shows there the general capital projects contribution revenue account 98018-456415-48031 will be reduced by $500,000. General capital projects construction 98118-513026-48031 will be reduced by 500. And then grant funds, state of Maryland grant revenue 10500-424000-29037 will be increased by 500, and grant fund construction account 10500-513026-29037 will be increased by $500,000. Authorization to spend money that was given.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2499, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes. The chair votes aye. I heard you that time.
Okay.
I got it. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2500.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Boda, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the Johnsons Lake Dam Improvements Project. Whereas Ordinance 2423 appropriated funds for the FY 2018 budget, whereas Ordinance 2423 allocated appropriation of $240,000 for the Johnson Lake Dam Improvement Project, and whereas funding for the project in Schedule B of Ordinance 2423 was allocated as $156,948 from Stormwater Pay Go and $83,052 from reallocation of prior year bonds, and whereas a budget amendment is requested to accomplish the reallocation of prior year bonds as planned for in Ordinance 2423, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital projects fund budget be and hereby amended as follows. And I think this time, if you want me to, I'll read that chart, but I think it's self-explanatory.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Not too bad. Any questions or comments?
Just a, you said, the minute I thought I had a question, Mark said, "It's self-explanatory." The bonds under unallocated, unallocated in Johnson, but I'm trying to figure out where the 83, $83,052. I see pay-go. I see paying cash out of stormwater, right?
Amanda's got the answer.
Yeah. I appreciate that. It's a Keith Cord dream.
Yes. So there's actually three different sources that we're reallocating funds from. The first one, where it says pay-go is unallocated stormwater funds from previous years from the stormwater utility.
And that's the 33,000?
That is the 33,355. The next category is funds left over from a completed project, which was our Waverly Drive project, and we had 26,735 left over from that project, so it's reallocating it to this. And the last one, the 22,961, is actually interest left over in a bond pool, so we're reallocating that much interest to this project.
So when we allocated, in Ordinance 2423, the $156,000, what are we doing with the $83,000 that we're not spending?
So we are spending that as part of this project. So the way the budget ordinance read, the 2423, the total project's 240,000. At that time, we had said we have 156,000 from the stormwater pay-go that we're going to use, and then we have to reallocate 83,000 from other bonds to also use it, and this is that reallocation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2500, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2503 for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda.
Second.
Mr. Irtin.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the grant fund to appropriate funds to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team and then using the acronym SWIFT. Whereas the Wycomico County Health Department, in conjunction with the City of Salisbury, applied for funds through the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission Grant Program, and whereas the CHRC has awarded the Wycomico County Health Department funds in the amount of $90,000, and whereas the Wycomico County Health Department is sub-granning $50,000 to the City of Salisbury, and whereas the sub-granted funds shall be used to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, known as SWIFT, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-grant agreement with Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas Section 7-29 of Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the City Council, and whereas the appropriation is necessary to execute, the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows, with an increase in the SWIFT grant revenue of $50,000 and an increase in the SWIFT grant expense of $50,000. And this follows the resolution from July 23, which accepted the grant that we're referring
Any questions or comments? I would just like to comment that the SWIFT program has been an overwhelming success, and I think that we look for more progress as we go forward. I think the participation of the different components is outstanding, so that's my comment. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2503, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2504 for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend Chapter 2.04.040, subsection C and G, Ethics Conflicts of Interest, Chapter 2.04.050, subsection G, 5, financial disclosure, local elected officials and candidates to be local elected officials, and Chapter 2.04.060, subsection D, Financial Disclosure, Employees and Appointed Officials, to comply with Subtitle 8 of the Maryland Public Ethics Law Requirements for Ethics Legislation relating to the conflicts of interest, financial disclosure, and lobbying. Whereas the Maryland law requires certain provisions in the Ethics Code of Maryland municipalities and counties, and whereas the state of Maryland made changes in the public ethics law, which took effect on October 1, 2017, and whereas some of these changes require the city to amend Chapter 2.04 of the Salisbury Municipal Code, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Chapter 2.04, Section 040C and G, Section 050G5I, and Section 060D be amended as follows. And under the 2.04 Ethics, it's 2.04.040, the first change that we note there is under subsection C, and it's the addition of a new three, which, and I'll go back and read that because it's kind of complicated the way this is prepared, but participation prohibitions. Except as permitted by the commission, by commission regulation or opinion, an official or employee may not participate in, three, a case, contract, or other specific matter for one calendar year after terminating their resignation if they previously assisted or represented another party as a lobbyist in the matter. This provision does not apply to uncompensated or minimally compensated board or commission members. And then the next section, which was three and is now four, reads, "A person who is disqualified from participating under paragraphs 1, 2, or 3 of this subsection shall disclose the nature and circumstances of the conflict and may participate or act if the disqualification leaves the body with less than a quorum capable of acting, or the disqualified official or employee is required by law to act, or the disqualified official or employee is the only person authorized to act." So it just, it can't tie the hands of government completely. And then under what used to be four and now is five, the prohibitions of 1, 2, and 3 of this subsection do not apply if participation is allowed by regulation or opinion of the commission. So if it were disclosed and an opinion was sought from the commission and they ruled that it was not a conflict, you could participate if it went that far. Those are required changes primarily having to do with lobbying, and that was the purpose of the addition. I neglected to mention that under the first line, sub-paragraph C, the word "the" was struck. So it just reads, "Except as permitted by commission, regulation, or opinion," instead of "the" commission, regulation, or opinion. And then down under 2.04.050, Financial Disclosure, subsection G, 5, it says, "Employment with or interest in entities doing business with the city." And then subsection I reads, "A statement filed under this section shall include a schedule of all offices, directorships, and compensated employment by the individual or member of the immediate family of the individual held at any time during the reporting period with entities doing business with the city. All statements filed under this section shall disclose whether the individual or individual's spouse is a lobbyist required to register, and if so, they shall identify the entities that engage the lobbyist." And then under subsection, small double I, again, the word salary is being struck and the word compensated employment is being put there. So if you had an individual who was a consultant who wasn't a salaried employee, the same rules would apply. And then under 2.04.060, Financial Disclosure, Employees and Appointed Officials, they were, under section D, "An official or employee shall disclose employment interests that raise conflicts of interest or potential conflicts of interest in connection with a specific proposed action by the employee or official sufficiently in advance of the action to provide adequate disclosure to the public. Officials and employees shall disclose in all statements filed hereunder whether they or their spouse is a lobbyist required to register, and if so, they shall identify entities that engage the lobbyist." And I think this legislation with the state arose as a result of members of the legislature who also either were or their spouses were acting as lobbyists, and it was intended to pick that up. There's also a copy of the form that everybody has to fill out in here, and there's one change that's shown on there, again, dealing with this. It's under Schedule F. It says, "I or a member of my immediate family owed debts excluding retail credit accounts during reporting period to entities doing business with or regulated by the specific government unit of the city with which I work." So again, the only time that you have to report that is if the bank or the entity that you owe money to is dealing with, directly with your branch of the...
With your branch.
Yes. Now, in your case, that could probably mean anything, but, you know...
So if you have a car loan through one of the banks.
Yeah, and that's...
You did, I thought.
Yes.
So... I was gonna say to you, thank you for answering the questions about the banks last time, but now that you've read it again...
Well, you know, this is a proposed change in our form. It's not, it's not a mandate.
You mean the branch of the bank?
It would, I think the way it would be, my interpretation of this, would be that if I were...
So if I had the Matt Herman Road branch?
No.
And I...
But see, what we're talking about is regulated by the city.
Okay.
So the city does not regulate like a federal bank.
That's the...
That's where it would be. That's the difference. So, but if you owed money to, you know, I guess, an individual in town who was in the business regulated by the city, then that would be something you would have to...
But it also, but it also says, but it also says, "A financial entity that did business with the city."
Right.
So if you have a home loan or a car loan...
Yeah, that's sort of a holdover, and I'll look into possibly striking that because I think that's sort of an overreach.
Well, I thought this was, wasn't this...
If we're gonna strike it, we can strike it now.
Well, this is a first reading, and the legislation does not change this form. The form was really included for your reference at this point. The changes in the form can be done by resolution, but we were just trying to highlight what the state's suggestions were.
Oh, they were suggestions?
Yeah.
They weren't?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is number one, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Number one, which is the simplest of all of them, does that mean that after one of us comes out of office, we cannot lobby? Or do we have to be a part of a lobbying group? We can't come back to the council chambers and lobby?
You could lobby as an individual, but you couldn't lobby as a career for that period.
You couldn't be compensated.
You couldn't be compensated.
So I'm not gonna get rich after this?
Yes.
No.
Not for a year. Not for a year, anyway, right?
And technically, the legislation that's on here tonight doesn't really address specifically this form. It was just this, we were including the form so that you could see what other changes might need to be made. For example, the commission, the Ethics Commission, can now put some of this information online according, the state has authorized that. But our local ethics board, you know, would have to vote to approve that, and I think ultimately it would have to be approved by you. But these are things for you to consider, not part of the legislation.
Gotcha.
Tonight.
I was just gonna ask, and with Mrs. Murdoch here, I have written down my bullet points in order to keep nicely to the script. We had, a few weeks ago, a department head that was a nominee to be a department head from the mayor's office, and the mayor indicated that there were people from an industry that lobbies our city on that committee, that hiring committee. I'm going to keep the descriptions vague in order to keep to the question. And the question is, if someone who lobbies our city, should someone who lobbies our city and who has lobbied our city repeatedly over the years, is it ethical for that person to be on a committee that is hiring? That's my question to you.
Is it, is it an individual?
It is an individual.
Not a, not an entity that he works, he or she works for?
It's an individual that that person is the president of that entity. So my question is, would, if you were going to do that, would you have to fill out an ethics form? If you were going...
Is he a paid?
If he's getting compensated for it, yes.
From that particular entity? If I can't make money for a year after I leave here, it seems odd, and I'll try and say this the correct way, it seems odd that someone who is the president of a lobbying group that lobbies us about an issue is also allowed to be on a search committee for a department head that will be administering the law... committee for a department head that will be administering the law in that same area, in that same issue. If, if it were, if it were in the fire department, I would ask the question the same way. It happens to be in, in code enforcement, and that's just where it happens to be. But my, but my question to you and to you was, should we talk about that?
I think, um, the code currently says that if you have been a lobbyist and you come onto a board or commission, that, you know, you cannot deal with any thing, I, I don't know if it's a one-year requirement, but it prohibits you from acting on anything that would be a conflict of interest. I can't remember the exact word.
But serving on a committee to hire a department head would not reach the threshold of that?
I think you would have to disclose your prior position as a lobbyist in, in that industry possibly, and, and recuse yourself from acting upon.
Recuse yourself, as you would.
For example, if you were acting upon someone who was part of your organization that you were lobbying for, I think you would have to recuse yourself.
Well, I guess maybe the, the question would be, is the, is this particular, is the hiring committee, is it the same individuals on the committee, or is it, you know, we're gonna hire for this department, so we're gonna maybe put this person, this person on the committee?
No.
I guess, because it's not a, it's not a committee that was, an appointment was made and the council gave consent.
Yes.
You know, it's, this is an internal executive function that, that, that they're making. So I, I don't know if that's something we want to get involved in. I mean, they're bringing the, the nominee to us after this particular group of people, you know, I mean, we've had several so far.
The only reason I asked, Mayor, was because this is to the point where you're allowed to take six steps after this date, and, and if Mrs. Heath wanted to do anything, she'd have to fill out papers because she's, you know, she's your wife, if she wanted to say anything publicly, she'd have to fill out papers because she's the wife of the City Council President, yet we hired a department head that in the search committee, the head of the lobbying group for this town sat on that committee to find that employee to head that department, and it just seems to me that, that we're micromanaging wives and we're micromanaging years and, and how long you can do it, and I'm poor for three sixty-five after this, yet to hire someone who is gonna, is going to be a very highly-paid person in our city government, I don't know if it's okay to have someone from an industry that lobbies us and lobbies us, even if they lobbied us once, whether that's hard or not. That's just my question for us to mull over, maybe the, it'll work session come up.
I think, I think that's the appropriate place to do it, and we'll, we'll have the discussion about it.
Cool, thank you, appreciate the time.
And, and just to, for clarity, it, it definitely, what we were discussing earlier about the form, that was the recommended changes, not, they're not mandated changes. So it's, just for.
So I, I believe in the engineering pr- principal kiss.
I understand.
Good. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor of ordinance number two-five-zero-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Uh, at this time, we have a request for public comment, and, uh, Ms. Grace Murdock would like to have a brief update on Waycomico Grows Kindness.
Yes, I agree.
Grace, come on up.
Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes, President Heath and the Council, I appreciate it. I was so, um, overwhelmed with joy to have the designation, the declaration signed by the City Council, and I just felt like you deserved to know that we're still working and everything is going swimmingly. In fact, um, our banner denoting the city as a World Kindness USA city is about to be, uh, installed, and I'm waiting for that. There are little tiny words, there's one asterisk and a little tiny word that says pending because the council that will grant us the designation does not actually meet until two thousand and nineteen. So we have one more kindness performance indicator, KPI, to meet, which is a conversation in kindness that will take place in Salisbury at some point with invited officials from other cities, and we are really the flagship of this process, and Michael Lloyd White is, um, going to grace us with his presence once again, he's coming to the festival. He will be here on September seventh and eighth, he will be mo- walking among the crowds, possibly with a bucket and a bucket brigade, if I get my way. So, everything's going really well, I've been invited to many things, uh, with school openings, and I will be representing Waycomico Grows Kindness, and you know who I know is the flagship of that is the City of Salisbury. So, thank you again, we're doing well. Also, the street, North Division Street, has been secured for Dance for Kindness on November eleventh, so get ready, Jim, I expect you to know the steps this year, all right? Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Grace, appreciate it very much. Okay, uh, at this time, I want to entertain a motion to convene in closed session, to convene in closed session in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland three-dash-three-oh-five-B-one to discuss the employment of an, the appointment of an employee.
So moved.
Mr. Iarton, Mr. Rudacil. We are now in closed session. Good evening, everyone, we have just come out of, uh, closed session. Uh, the Council met in closed session to discuss the appointment of an employee and has given their advice and consent to the Mayor regarding that appointment. Any comments for the good of the order? Hearing none, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.